To the January 7, 2025 Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting, I call this meeting to order. Please, everyone, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, then an invocation by Pastor Lonnie Skiles with Big Valley Grace. And after that, we'll be having a moment of silence for the passing of President Jimmy Carter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the moment of silence, please.
Just a few verses from Scripture for today. The writer of Proverbs says, "Make your ear attentive to wisdom, incline your heart to understanding; for if we cry for discernment, and if we lift our voice for understanding, and if we seek her as silver, and search for her as for hidden treasures, then we will discern the fear of the Lord, and discover the knowledge of God; for it is he who gives us wisdom." Let's pray. Father, I thank you so much for the privilege and opportunity this morning to represent you, grateful, Lord, that we can come into your presence with Thanksgiving and into your courts with praise. We give thanks to you and bless your name, for, Lord, you are so good. I thank you for the life and the ministry of President Carter. I thank you for enabling him to run his race well and finishing well. Thank you for the legacy that he has in our country as well as in his family. And I pray, Lord, you'd bless his home and his family, his children, his grandchildren, his great-grandchildren, as they grieve today. Lord, we, I ask today, Lord, you'd give to these men great wisdom, discernment over the issues. Thank you for their service. Thank you for their sacrifice. I pray, Lord, you'd bless their homes and their families. May your favor shine upon them today. Would you give them leadership and direction, Lord, as they seek to serve us and represent us on these critical issues? So, Lord, we bless your name. We give you praise and Thanksgiving, for it's you who've made us not ourselves. We bless you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor. All right. Next item is election of the 2025 Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors. Yeah. All right, we'll take both Chairman and Vice Chairman motion together. Motion to appoint Buck Condit as Chairman for the Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Vito Chiesa for Vice Chairman of the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors.
So, that's the motion.
That's the mo-
And I will second that.
All right. Motion by Chairman, soon-to-be schmuck, Graywall.
Do I get a say in this?
No. It's over.
And second by Supervisor Terry Whitrow. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And that's it. Let's move to item number four, and Supervisor Buck, or Chairman Buck Condit will be convening the meeting here on forward.
Go get him. Go get him. Dang, it's such a comfortable chair. Just gonna do this one last time. It's so loud. It's so loud. So, don't be going anywhere, man. Come on back up.
We've gone high-tech.
Wow. Wow, I had that old one.
So, on behalf of the entire board and as your Vice Chair, we want to say thank you for your leadership throughout the year as Chairman. We've watched your leadership skills, and they travel in many different areas. You're an expert in many different areas. And, you know, all of us up here bring a different fabric in our leadership, and yours covers multiple areas. And we want to say thank you for your strong leadership. You were the face of the county for a year, and there was no more evident than that than the Stanislaus State of the, State of the County address at the library. What a showing that was. And actually, what that did, that won you to do the State of the County addresses for as long as you're on the board.
There were also times throughout the year-
So much for technology.
Yeah, so much for technology. There are also times throughout the year that what we like to call make sausage on the dais, that you actually, your leadership helped us get to a point. Now, everybody likes sausage, but they don't like seeing it made. So, we thank you for your leadership qualities and the way you have ran the board and the meetings. And as a colleague and a friend, thank you.
Thank you. Good share.
That, that right there is-
Yeah, I don't get the technology, Mike. Just get back to that. Well, thank you so much. It was a privilege to serve Chairman of the Board, one of my greatest honors of my life. I enjoyed every bit of it. My only goal, I set the bar very low for myself. It was just that I don't fall on the way to making a presentation. So, mission accomplished. But other than that, this year wouldn't have been as good as it was without my colleagues who, you know, worked with me on different things. We work collaboratively, collectively, and that's one of the biggest joys I enjoy of being on this board. We work collectively. We work well. There can be disagreements, but as soon as we leave that room, we're shaking hands, giving everybody hugs, and just going on to the next issue. And you don't know how valuable that is in a team where you can just look past issues and, you know, start off fresh on the next issue. And I think that's great for the board. I think that's great for the community that we serve. And then, last but certainly not least, the staff, the CEOs, team, every department head, every single employee of Stanislaus County that makes us look good. We go into other counties. We go to statewide organizations where we go and talk about things that are happening in our county. And I'm telling you, we so many times hear such genuine and positive comments about our leadership, and it's just humbling to be a part of it. So, thank you to all of you. Look forward to working with you, still on the Board of Supervisors. And Supervisor Buck Condit, Chairman Buck Condit, I think he's gonna do a phenomenal job. His demeanor is just right for being the Chair. I know sometimes being Chair, things can get a little flustered and stuff, but your demeanor just shows you're always even keel. You're somebody that listens, and I think that's something that is a benefit of being the Chair, because usually you're the last one to weigh in on things, so you're doing a lot of listening. And so, I look forward to your leadership, working with you on anything that you look to accomplish and make Stanislaus County even better than it is. And then, my field rep, Patrick, when you're Chair, you have additional responsibilities, you know, notarizing things, making sure that you're at events where others can't be. And Patrick ran a great schedule for me, did a great job. So, Patrick, I want to thank you so much and all of the field rep team that, you know, always ensures that we do a good job and we are where we need to be. So, thank you to all of you. Look forward to serving in the capacity as just a county supervisor. Thank you.
One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Brother, good luck.
Thank you. All right. All right, five, public comment. Public comment, there's a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record and direct all comments towards the dais. And so, it is fair for every speaker, please keep your comments to five minutes. First one we have up on is Brandon Kirkbride.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Kirkbride. I represent the Stanislaus Sworn Deputies Association. They are the sworn deputy sheriffs that work for Stanislaus County. I spoke to you last meeting, and at that time, I told you that we had 189 deputies. We now, as of today, have 187. I told you that three deputies were in the process of leaving. It is now five. We have a recruitment officer that is calling to fast-track one of those five. So, within presumably the next few weeks, we'll be down to 186 deputies. I had mentioned to you before that we cannot compete in this market, that very few people want to be law enforcement officers in this day and age, especially in this state. When I first got hired, there were literally hundreds of people waiting in line. Today, we're lucky, if it's a dozen, 15. It's extremely competitive and extremely hard to get people to be cops and to be deputies, especially in this state, than the deputies do. So, what is to stop a deputy from leaving the Sheriff's Department and going to the Modesto Police Department or the Turlock Police Department? The city of Sonora offers a $50,000 hiring incentive for laterals and an $18,000 incentive for new hires. We offer nothing. The city of Fremont used to offer $20,000. They are now offering a $100,000 hiring incentive for lateral officers. They are not the first or only agency in this county, in this state, to offer $100,000 incentive. Every agency in this state is struggling to hire and retain law enforcement officers. This is not unique to our county. We cannot fix this. The sheriff cannot fix this. It is up to you to fix this problem. We are currently at 187, soon to be 186, with at least another five looking to leave. I can't stop it. The sheriff can't stop it. It is up to you to help us fix this problem. So, I will be coming to each and every one of these meetings to tell you what our numbers are, and I would really like to come here and say that we're at 190, 195, 200. We're allotted 209 spots. We haven't seen those numbers since over a decade, since before the layoffs and the pay cuts. We were at 214 before that. We dropped down to about 137. We've slowly, over the years, come up to the high 180s. Since 2021, we have been averaging the high 180s. We haven't touched 200 in over a decade. It's a problem that affects our department and it affects the community. So, with reduced numbers of deputies, we're gonna have to reduce services. Response times are gonna be longer, and ultimately, the public are the one, is the one that's gonna suffer. So, again, I'm asking for your help to work with us, to work with the sheriff, to fix this problem. It's not going away. It's statewide. It's national. I'm not asking you to do hiring incentives. I'm asking for you to help us be competitive with agencies within our county and outside of our county. There are eight counties that you use to compare us to. All county bargaining units are compared to other counties. Four of those counties offer hiring incentives. Kern County offers $25,000 for a lateral, $15,000 for a new hire, $5,000 for relocation assistance to help you move. Madera County offers $15,000 hiring incentive. After five years, they offer lifetime medical. And they also offer down payment assistance to purchase a house in their county to help people move there. San Joaquin County offers a $10,000 hiring bonus and a $2,000 to help you move there. We offer nothing. So, again, I'm asking for your help to help us become competitive in this market, to retain what we have left, and to try to recruit qualified lateral officers. Lateral officers save us $60,000 in Stanislaus County compared to a new hire. That's $60,000 we save by hiring a lateral as opposed to a brand-new deputy sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. I think the CEO would like to comment.
Yeah, just for members of the public who may be listening to today's public comment, and I very much appreciate the update and so forth. I do want to clarify, the county does offer hiring incentives for all new employees who join Stanislaus County. Currently, our hiring incentives are up to one month's pay, up to a maximum of $10,000 in a cash bonus or time off, depending upon what that person wants. We also offer for lateral positions, we match vacation schedules as well as the potential for front-loaded sick leave and other types of things to try to attract those kinds of laterals into the community. I understand that that may not be what some may prefer, or we'll definitely take a look at what others are doing to try to see where we compare in that market for attracting laterals or even new applicants to county positions. But I do just want to clarify that we do offer up to a $10,000 cash bonus, depending upon what your position is, but it is the equivalent of one month's pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one up is Ron McCurdy, McCurtry. I'm sorry to, let me know if I pronounced that right. No, I butchered it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and congratulations, Mr. Chairman. I am Ron McMurtry. And also, if there's a roast for Supervisor Graywall, I'd like an invitation. Anyway, okay, I'm lightening it up because, yeah, my thing I'm doing is tough. I have to try to get some things covered up here. One of the things I don't like, it's not a legal thing or anything, but what it is, is I like that you guys are a team. I love it when I see that teamwork. What concerns me are these occasional three-to-two votes. One of the things is the difference between democracy, which can be mob rule, because, oh, more people want this than the other. I prefer that you guys form a consensus. And I don't want to get into what has hap, what I've seen here that has caused that, but one of the things I see is that there are some public speakers pitting some of the supervisors against each other, and that's against teamwork. It's also a little bit of a playbook of work, ah, playbook for people who like to maintain the corruption, maintain the disruptions in government. And so, we need to work as a team, including members of the public like myself. I really love you guys. So, I just want to say a couple of things. If there's a situation, and you need to put this maybe on your department heads, but if there's a situation when being briefed about something that that's one of your departments have to present, and you, and they detect that you have a little issues with this or that, then maybe the department head schedule a presentation so it can be discussed, so you wouldn't be pressured into an immediate vote on an issue where you guys have debate. Yes, you should debate publicly. I don't want you to violate the Brown Act, but I'm just feeling like maybe some of your department heads, when they say, ooh, this is trickier to maybe have a public meeting. That's just one thing. And then, we don't have these three-to-do votes. It's just, it seems like you guys should settle things so you know what's responsible for everybody, covering every demographic. My other, oh, shoot, now I forgot the other thing. Oh, this is terrible. I should bring notes. This is, this is bad. I always think I can do public speaking, then I come up here. Okay. The other thing, oh, if you have a public speaker that says something that seems to single out one supervisor in a way that, you know, that you might think is divisive, I think that's happened a couple times, I would like to ask the chairman or the senior supervisor to maybe, at the end of that particular comment period, to please say something about how you're a team. Please reinforce the thing that you don't, I mean, I don't want you to smack down the speakers. They have a right to speak. I understand that. But if something that signals the teamwork, you know, we're not, you know, blind or whatever to the concerns you have, and it's not fair to single out a particular supervisor for reward or criticism if it's, you know, a team effort. Okay, that's just my opinion. I don't know what you can do about it. I don't want you to violate the Brown Act, but I just would like to see way more, I'd like to see way fewer three-to-two votes, and if possible, avoid four-to-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Next one up is Alfredo Miranda, Representative Congressman McClintock's office.
Good morning, Board. My name is Alfredo Miranda. I'm here today on behalf of Congressman McClintock. In February 2023, this Board anonymously voted to adopt the resolution in support of renaming the United States Postal Service Office located on 2300 Sylvan Avenue, Modesto, California, as the Corporal Michael D. Anderson Jr. Post Office Building. With your support, Congressman McClintock introduced legislation to renaming that post office building in honor of Corporal Michael Anderson Jr. After almost two years, the bill was signed into law by President Biden on January 2, 2025. We do not yet have a timeline for the official renaming, but we will keep the Board updated as that develops. Thank you for your support in honoring the memory and sacrifice of Corporal Michael D. Anderson Jr. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfredo. That's good news. Any other people would like public comment, come on up?
Good morning, Board, staff, and county residents. Milt Treewyler, the lifetime Stanislaus County resident. We must be con- We were given a Garden of Eden, and what are we doing? We're turning it into a desert. We have a refill, a free will, and what do many people do? They pursue, pursue the love of money. We have an intellect, and we have choices, and some people are choosing not to conserve the good things we have. We must be the conservationists for our children and descendants, since they cannot do the things for themselves. We understand we must have clean air, water, and food, and yet, we are not being good stewards. We are not conserving our resources. Please wake up. Wake up for the sake of our children and our descendants. Thank you.
Thank you, Milt. Any others? Seeing none, I'm gonna close public comment and move to item number six, Consent Calendar. Any supervisor would like to pull anything? Before the Board takes action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve. I got a first.
Second.
Second. I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do I need to say unanimous? Okay, good.
You just said it, though. You just said it.
I just said it, yeah. Thank you for that. All right, moving on to item number eight. Discussion items, acceptance and approval of the Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office, and Probation Department, AB 481 Annual Military Equipment Report. Hold a community engagement meeting and renew the military equipment use policy ordinance. Sheriff Darcy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your chairmanship.
Thank you.
Members of the Board, as you know, this is an annual requirement under Assembly Bill 481. And as I've said before, I think this is one of the dumber laws that are out there for the reasons that I've said before, because everything is military equipment, literally everything that we use. And so, I think that all that we're really talking about here is technology and technology that we can put to good use. And I'm not gonna belabor a lot of the points. Most of them are in your report. A couple of things that I do want to call out, though, are the incredible increase in drone usage of 137% over the last year. As you know, we operate roughly 35 different aerial drones or UASs. We also have a couple of robots for the bomb team, but they crawl along the ground very slowly. But it's the drone usage. And one of the reasons for that is we now have drone operators assigned 24/7/365 to the Sheriff's Office, and we literally deploy them on a daily basis. I actually get an email every time we fly so, fly one. That way, I can, I can click into a link from wherever I'm at and watch it if I so choose. But that is an incredible tool for us when it comes to resolving situations differently. And as we know, excuse me, as we know, in the last several years, there have been a lot of conversation across our country about different outcomes in tactical environments or in high-risk incidents, and that usually comes from different tactics. And one of those different tactics that we are trying to employ regularly is drones. And I would tell you that we certainly lead in our region in our drone usage. We have some incredible equipment and some incredible tactics around that. But that provides us with different information that can lead to, you know, better decisions as opposed to rushing in kind of willy-nilly. I know that we had presented to the Board last year at some point on our air unit, specifically the drones, I think it was early last year, you know, but we showed some footage in there, and it was a guy in a house with a gun, and as the drone flew in, you could see him pointing that gun at the drone. Had that been a deputy, that most likely would have resulted in a, in a shooting, and nobody wants that outcome whatsoever. So, these drones, which are, under this law, considered military equipment, really provide different outcomes for us, and we are very thankful for that. In addition, it actually allows us to capture more criminals and put them in jail where they belong, and, you know, the DA can prosecute them and so on. So, that is, that is really the one big thing that I want to point out as far as an increase over last year. There's no other significant changes on here from any of our equipment from last year at least, and I think Chief Probation Officer is here, Mark, and the DA was here. Jeff is still here as well. If you have any questions for them, I can't speak to the specificity of their organizations, but I think generally speaking, we are all in the same category. And I think I will conclude my comments without pending any questions from the Board.
Thank you, Sheriff. Bring it back to the Board. Any, any questions from the Board?
You know that the public can access the equipment list, right?
Yes.
Through the website.
Yes, and I actually thank you for that. You know, if any members of the public, whether they're here in person or online or, you know, whatnot, if you have any specific questions, feel free to email me. My, this email that comes directly to me is on the website. Our website has just been redone. You gotta click on like Administration, and you'll see my picture. It's really beautiful. That's a joke. But the email is right associated with that. So, feel free to email me if there's any specific questions as well.
And some of these things are as simple as noise, flash, diversionary devices, explosive breaching, the aircrafts, the different types of aircraft. It's pretty, pretty standard, and I would agree with you that people think of military equipment as a tank.
Right.
Or launching missiles or something, and this is pretty much standard operating equipment.
All the equipment that we have is commonly used law enforcement equipment. We have no MRAPs. We have no Humvees. We have no tracked vehicles, like tracked armored vehicles. The two armored vehicles that we have are law enforcement-specific armored vehicles that are not actually in use by the military outside of like a military installation where it is used by their police departments for the same things that we use them for. You know, and I know on here too, the Remington 870 shotgun is listed as military equipment. It is literally the most common shotgun in usage in America for duck hunting, dove hunting. I'm gonna hazard a guess and say that at least some of you sitting up there have at least one. I know I have a few. So, anyway, it is not military equipment by any stretch. It is very commonly used law enforcement equipment, though, and duck hunting equipment.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on this item? Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ron McMurtry, again. I just have a quick question for the sheriff, since he's here, if you could answer. Since the sheriff's department's using drones, is that requ, does that require you having positions in the sheriff's department, or do you just train deputies on a, on a need basis?
Thank you for the question. The answer to that is actually yes to both of those. There are specific legal requirements under the FAA that we have to comply with. Type 107, there's two different categories, type 107 and then something else that escapes me at the moment. So, we do have to meet those requirements for training and ongoing training and certification and so on. But to the specific question, we have deputies that operate them. It is a more efficient use of resources because we don't fly them, we don't fly drones every minute of every day. We fly them virtually every day, but we have deputies, think of it as like a canine, right? So, we have a deputy that handles the dog, but he's also a deputy. The drones function exactly the same way. They have specific vehicles that come with the drone equipment, you know, the big TV in the back so we can monitor it and so on, and, but they're, they're a deputy. So, they handle regular calls for service and then fly the drones when needed. So, does that answer your question?
Thank you, Sheriff.
And you cannot just go buy a drone, another police agency can't buy a drone and just put it into use, right?
Correct. They have to meet those FAA regulations and certifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other members of the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for a motion to-
Motion to accept.
I got a first.
I'll second that.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Moving on to correspondence. Knowledge, street, receipt of correspondence referred or recommended on the agenda. All right, ten supervisor reports.
Great. I would just like to make a report. Received some unfortunate news this morning. Heartbroken to hear the passing of Rebecca Harrington. She was a champion for our community, Chair of the South Modesto MAC. Rebecca worked tirelessly for her community and brought issues to the forefront, to the Board's attention. Many times, you saw that she would be here at the Board meetings advocating for her community and for the area that she represented on the MAC. She also was a dedicated part, member of the American-
every minute of every day. We fly them virtually every day, but we have deputies, think of it as like a canine, right? So we have a deputy that handles the dog, but he's also a deputy. The drones function exactly the same way. They have specific vehicles that come with the drone equipment, you know, the big TV in the back so we can monitor it and so on. And, but they're, they're a deputy. So they handle regular calls for service and then fly the drones when needed. So does that answer your question?
And you cannot just go buy a drone. Another police agency can't buy a drone and just put it into use, right?
Correct. They have to meet those FAA regulations and certifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other members of the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion to.
What are you doing, sir?
I got a first.
I'll second that.
First and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to correspondence. Knowledge, receipt of correspondence referred or recommended on the agenda. All right, ten supervisor reports.
Great. I would just like to make a report. Received some unfortunate news this morning. Heartbroken to hear the passing of Rebecca Harrington. She was a champion for our community, Chair of the South Modesto MAC. Rebecca worked tirelessly for her community and brought issues to the forefront, to the board's attention. Many times you saw that she would be here at the board meetings advocating for her community and for the area that she represented on the MAC. She also was a dedicated member of the American GI Forum, held an annual event, Dia de las Muertes, celebrating Mexican and Hispanic culture. I think when it started, it was just a small event, and then over the years, it just became a really notable event in downtown Modesto. I had the pleasure of working with Rebecca on issues ranging from improving critical infrastructure, hosting many community cleanups. I know Supervisor Condit, when he represented that area, hosted a lot with her as well, and I had the opportunity as well. And many members, or every member on the board, had a personal relationship with her. You know, she was a phone call away for all of us, and she felt the same. So we offer our deepest condolences to her family and community leaders and people that make a positive change for our county like Rebecca will be deeply missed.
Thank you. Any other reports? I'd just like to say I humbly, here as chair, I just, it's a big, it's a big position for me personally. And I, I look forward to the new year, and I know I'm gonna be leaning on all you guys for recommendations to, to be better. And...
You're gonna be awesome.
It's a great start.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on, legislative and fiscal management report.
Yeah, just a couple of items of note, I think, and you've all seen this in the news, but definitely worth noting that the federal government did avoid their shutdown, which is good. So the federal government's funded into March of this year now, and hopefully they'll get something more long-term there pretty soon now that the new Congress is sworn in as well. Also want to recognize that Governor Newsom did preview the 25-26 state budget. We didn't hear anything that was necessarily of concern or direct impact to counties. Also just want to acknowledge that he, he did that preview here in Stanislaus County, although I think it was an event that was a little more of a private event and not necessarily one that local government officials were invited out to. So I know I've been asked why we didn't see other local government officials there, and just want to acknowledge that we appreciate his attention to our community. And there was some indications that we'll likely be back for some more conversations on some of those economic development initiatives that were mentioned as well during yesterday's, yesterday's press conference. And then the last thing is a public announcement that today is our last day to register as a volunteer for our annual point in time count, which we utilize to track those individuals experiencing homelessness in our community. The count is scheduled for January 30, and you can visit stancounty.com for details on how to register. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Deputy Travis Middleton, thank you for your overwatch. And we have no closed session?
No closed session today.
And so we're moving on to adjournment.